It's May 4th, 7:15. We will call our special city work session for May 4th to order. Looks like we are all here today. We have no public forum at this time. Bill discussion. Anyone have any questions with the bills for this meeting?
Yeah, I have one question. I know in our last financial rec report, there was on the police general fund that fourteen thousand eight seventy one fifty nine, and that didn't add up to what was in there, but now this one, we also have that same number under a line item. Can that be explained, please?
Let me look quick. Okay, I cannot find my packet. There it is. Oh, that's health insurance.
Yeah, but I, in the last, last meeting when I was absent, that total came up to that fourteen eight seventy one fifty nine, the same as what the health insurance is, but when I added up the, the money for that police fund last, two weeks ago, it only came up to one thousand seven hundred forty four dollars and twenty six cents.
So you're, you're looking at last week, last times?
The, the, um, on the last one when I was absent, yes, the, the total came to that fourteen eight seventy one fifty nine. The same thing as what we have right now under their health insurance, but when I added up the rest of it in the last, in our last budget, our last financial report, it didn't add up to that fourteen eight seventy one fifty nine. All the entries was only like, not even two thousand dollars.
So that was not the total, Jim, on the, on the April twentieth one? The total is on the next page.
Oh, went over to the next page?
Right, so the fourteen eight seventy one fifty nine was health insurance for March.
Oh, okay.
And then if you look onto the next page, there's additional expenses and the total for the police was twenty thousand two thirty five.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, I, I, maybe I just, I didn't see it transferred to the next page.
Yeah, yep, it did go into the next page.
Okay, that explains everything for me.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, anyone? Then consent agenda item discussion. Anyone have any questions with consent agenda items for this meeting? Then we're on to council informational only items. We have nothing specific listed. John, is there anything?
Yeah, I have a couple items just to bring up. So the league, Gary Carlson from the league sent out a message last weekend, and it came out from coalition sent one out last night, and the House has put together their tax bill, and it actually removes the local option sales tax items from this potential tax bill. So, and every, all indications are that local option sales tax projects are going to be suspended from this year through twenty twenty, till the twenty twenty two session. So they put a moratorium, included in this is a moratorium on resolutions requesting local option sales taxes through July first of twenty twenty one. So starting in November, or by November of next year, they're supposed to have a committee that is working on establishing, establishing what is a re, project of, an eligible project of regional significance for a local option sales tax. And so no cities are going to be able to approve or renew a new sales tax this year from this session, as well as next year and next session, and that, you know, likely would have to wait until twenty twenty two. You know, a timeline for that would be in twenty twenty two, you'd have your same resolution that would have to go to the legislative session, and then if that's approved, then you could go to your voters in the November election in twenty twenty two, and likely start in twenty twenty three collecting the, the sales tax.
It can only be with regular elections?
It has to be part of a regular, um, general election. And I know the, the mayor was mentioning it too earlier, there is, from the National Guard, they're doing a fly, recognition flyover, and Little Falls is a part of that, and they should be flying over near the hospital around eleven o'clock on Wednesday. Just for, is that one of the more details, and I'll let the mayor or council president, he can mention that in the regular meeting.
And they'll be flying northeast or southwest?
Um, I believe they're originating from Camp Ripley, so they're coming from the north, but I guess I didn't see that in the list, I just saw the time. And they included a bunch of other cities that were part of the, that were in the flight path.
That's listed on the city's website?
Um, we can cer- certainly update that. We got it late this afternoon, but we can.
Okay, you, you just said something about the list, so I wasn't sure where that was at.
Yeah, it was part of an attachment in the message we got from them.
It was on the news tonight, showed the path it was going. Camp Ripley, Little Falls, St. Cloud, all the way down to wherever it ends. I, I can't remember where it, where it ended.
I think Rochester.
Yeah, I know, I know they're going down over Hastings through the Veterans Home, and I think they're wa- putting their way all the way down to Rochester.
I think you're right.
It's in the shared screen now.
There it is.
John, do you know how that deal with the sales option, sales tax, how is that going to affect our town five, six, three, four, five? Is there, you know, do you know what's going to be going on with that?
Um, with the local option sales tax project, um, that will effectively be have, have to be put on hold if, you know, for including that as a revenue source, but we certainly can take the information that we've gained in that little, our town, the our town grant process and, and use that towards other projects that wasn't, you know, only isolated to, say, only a community center. So we, we certainly are going to be looking at more of this, of what we can, can do revenue wise, but projections are coming out. The state is also doing a re, they're doing, redoing the projection models for the budget based on the impact of COVID and the state home orders and shutdowns, and right now projecting, you know, some pretty significant deficits for the state. And if they, they show that, then the state can at least tap into their reserve funds and start using those towards operating deficits from the state level. Then the federal government money actually just came in as well, and they're looking at how they're going to utilize that within the state and make that available and distribute it to local govern, units of government, but none of that information has been determined yet. But as far as sales tax proj, projects funded by sales tax, nothing is going to happen until twenty twenty two session. I mean, we could still be doing work in advance and preparing for it, for, to bring it up in the legislative session twenty twenty two, but we won't be able to pass anything this session, this year.
So John, how is this affecting our budget, our city budget here? Are we going to have to make some adjustments to that as we?
Yeah, we're, we're modeling it right now. Fortunately, the county with their decision, they kept the payment collection date the same, so they will be doing a first, a reconciliation of the first tax collection for us. So trying to, been trying to get information from the county as to what that might be. However, it's, they're, you know, they're, they're collecting taxes across the county for multiple jurisdictions, and even within each jurisdiction, they have various needs that, that are, are various things that are accounting into that levy. You know, for us, we have our general fund portion, we have our debt service portion, we have our HRA portion, we have the EDA portion. So all of that, you know, is, is tough to manage, but we're, I'm trying to model some various scenarios. And, you know, I think fortunate for us, I'm, I'm, I think our major taxpayers are, are highest, you know, the ones that pay the highest taxes are large staple industries or, or retailers that have been open and operating. And I, I hope that they will be able to make their fir, first payments in full, even though the county, while keeping the payment date the same, did say that they would reduce the penalties to, I think for the first payments, down to one percent penalty. But we're, so that's what we're trying to project. We've had indications from the state that they're going to maintain LGA, but I, so I think that at least will come in for us, so for our first, because our biggest res, revenue stunt, revenue receipts are going to be in June and July, and we really need those because we have bond payments to make in August. So it's, it's important that we get those to come in, which will help us. I, I think we'll be at an okay point for cash flow, but we're still going to be assessing as we go what major capital expenses we're going to continue with, if it's something that, you know, is going to delay us. But there are items that if we don't take an opportunity, you know, we have the truck, for the fire truck, that's a huge opportunity for us for something that is in our capital plan, but, you know, we're, so we need to kind of take advantage of that, and we do have at least in, in equipment fund reserves, the cash to do that. It's our general fund budgeted revenue that we'd have to, that we have to be assessing constantly to make sure that we have the capital to do it.
Thank you. We only have a couple minutes. Any constituent messages? They do have, go ahead.
Mr. President, I was contacted again about seeing if we would consider allowing chickens in Little Falls. If you want to discuss this again, I suppose it's something we'd have to send to the planning commission and go through that whole process again.
Do we need to allow some time? Talk about that during our next stop planning meeting?
Possibility. That would be something we could discuss.
How will that work if it's already been voted on? Are people, somebody with a no vote going to have to re, uh, re, uh, point it, uh, re-motion that? Or how is that going to work?
I don't think we ever brought it forward. It was always in the work session, and it was consensus in the work session that it wasn't something we're going to con, pursue or change the ordinance on. If I recall from.
It came up a few years ago, John, before you were here, and.
It was right when I came.
And, and it was, you know, I believe.
Oh, okay. That was before I was here, but it was discussed while I was here, like, within the first year.
Well, most of the co, not many of the people on the city council right now were on the city council when that res, or when that ordinance first came up, so, um.
I think it was, right? I, I remember discussing it.
Yeah.
It kind of bothered, but I don't think we voted on it.
Predate Raquel and James.
Yeah, it was before my time. I, they noted chickens in town, so, so you know how I feel about it.
Well, and I think we can bring it to the work session, because before it gets to the regular agenda, we should, we need to find out if there's an appetite for it. We do everything else.
We'll have it on the next work session, right, agenda?
And it's seven thirty, so we're going to adjourn our, um, work session. And we'll call the, our, uh, regular city council meeting of May fourth to order. We're all here. Let's stand and say the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to this flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands unafraid. With virtue, justice, and justice for all. All individuals are asked to either silence or turn off all cell phones, pagers, and other electronic devices that might disrupt the meeting. Approval of the agenda. Approve the agenda as posted in accordance with the open meeting law, and herein place all agenda items on the table for discussion. What is the wish of the council?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Storey, second by Councilmember Liljegren. As a reminder, since we're electronic, all votes have to be by roll call. Roll call, please.
Knopfle?
Yes.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Starlee?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Gushik?
Yes.
Harries?
Approval of the minutes. Special work session meeting of April twentieth, two thousand twenty, and the regular meeting of April twentieth, two thousand twenty, approved. What is the wish of the council?
Mr. President, I'll move to approve the minutes.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Hanson, second by Mayor Zilka. A roll call, please.
Mr. President, I'm, I wasn't there last stop meeting, so why, should I be voting on this or not?
Abstain.
You can abstain.
Uh, Mr. President, before we go on there, um, when we voted for the, um, speaking spot, I think if I remember correctly, there were two nays that voted on it, and I think in the, in the minutes, it said everybody, a nay's none. Unless I didn't read it right.
You read it right?
Right. The nays should be Lundberg and Frank Gushik.
Right, yeah.
Any other corrections? Roll call vote, please.
I'm sorry, I just lost all volume, so, um. Is there anything I need to note as far as the minutes? Motion by Hanson, second by Zilka?
During, in the spot where it had for the electronic charging station, there were two, two no votes, Lundberg and Goshick.
Okay.
But it doesn't reflect that in the copy.
Lundberg and Gushik, okay. Sorry about that. Okay, so minutes. Liljegren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Starlee?
I'll abstain. I was not present.
Hanson?
Yes.
Gushik?
Yes.
Knopfle?
Yes.
Harries?
Approval of the bills. Checks one zero two four nine eight through one zero two five five eight, totaling two hundred and thirty seven thousand three hundred and five dollars thirty four cents. Approved. What is the wish of the council?
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
Sorry, I, my computer was blipping out. Who made the motion?
Gushik.
And Knopfle?
Yep.
Motion by Councilmember Gushik, second by Councilmember Knopfle. Roll call vote, please.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Starlee?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Gushik?
Yes.
Knopfle?
Yes.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Harries?
Awards, donations, presentations, and proclamations, we have none. Consent agenda. Addendum to letter of arrangement, audit, Schlenner, Wetter, and Company, approved. Deferral of assessment, two thousand twenty C, public improvement three seventy five, approved. Economic Development Authority minutes, April two thousand twenty, received. Friends of Linden Hill Raffle, date changed to June seventeenth, two thousand twenty one, approved. Horizon Health Raffle, date changed to September twenty five, two thousand twenty. Approved. What is the wish of the council?
Move to approve and receive this consent agenda. I do.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Storey, second by Councilmember Liljegren. Roll call, please.
Excuse me, uh, council president?
Yes.
I believe that there were three months worth of minutes from the EDA, you only mentioned one.
They're all for April? It was three meetings in April.
Oh, okay, all right, thank you.
Meeting every Friday because of the ongoing situation.
I see. Thank you.
Roll, oh, please.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Starlee?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Gushik?
Yes.
Knopfle?
Yes.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Harries?
Publics he, public hearings and lettings, lettings. Public's work director engineer. A mower first, for mid, for Midwest Machinery Streets and Parks Department, to award and approve.
The, the, the first on the, the agenda for our letting is the mower for the Parks Department. We budgeted thirty five thousand dollars for a new mower in the Parks Department. We requested two votes for, uh, for this mower. One was not for the state bid, and the other one was from Midwest Machinery, the amount of thirty nine thousand five hundred dollars. That does include the trade-in of our current mower, uh, and that was less than the state bid amount of forty thousand two hundred and ninety four dollars and two cents.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll make the motion to approve, yeah.
And.
I think that was a second by the, oh?
Yes.
Motion by Councilmember Goshik, Goshik, second by Councilmember Lundberg. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, if I may, um, we, we kind of ran out of time during our, our work session. So I was going to just bring up a question basically for city staff and the president and the mayor. Uh, with the un, uncertain future, what are we looking at doing here? Would be my position that, uh, until we know how some of this stuff is going to shake out, we should probably be seizing some opportunities to tighten our belt a little bit, looking at things that can be delayed. I think our property tax revenue here in the future is kind of in, in, in question. So like, with a mower here, um, I think it's a good opportunity to mention that, you know, among, among, among other things, but like, the mower, i- it's not huge. You know, is, the one we have now, um, I'm, I'm guessing it's showing its age, but I think these are the opportunities that we can seize to not, not spend some money here until we know how this goes. I mean, if it's doing its job, may, maybe we just roll with it until this is over.
Good points.
I'd like to. Mr. President, I'd like to hear from John and see what, what, if this is something that can be delayed, or from Greg, you know, what, what, what are their feelings on this?
Yeah, I would, I would let Greg speak to the condition of the, the mower that's replacing, and whether or not it's been, you know, maintained and still operational. I know that's, that can be a detriment, because if it's, you know, I, I would encourage that the capital improvement items that we will move forward with are definitely something of need, and that we don't have existing equipment that's available to, to, you know, complete, to do the work. So we don't want to be leaving ourselves where we're not com, you know, we're not doing the work adequately because we don't have the equipment to do it. Um, or that the equipment, in order to keep that equipment operating, we have to spend a lot of money on maintenance or repairs in order to get it back operational. Um, we struggled with this at the golf course for a number of years to, you know, bringing up old equipment that we're constantly trying to, you know, ma, just keep operating. And, you know, when those, when that equipment goes down, replacing it even with a new item isn't, isn't, these items aren't as simple as, you know, we just go to the, you know, implement dealer and pick up a new one. These are generally more specialized items that aren't readily available by those, those, even the local dealers for us. So I know, I hope, Craig, Greg, that you heard that, um, question, and if you could speak to the condition of the existing mower that we're replacing.
Yeah, the, the existing mower, uh, two thousand and one, it's definitely currently showing its, its age. You know, is it something that we could push off until, say, July, when they find out more about the, the taxes and how that affects our budget to continue? There's only a couple of months left. I don't think I would want to do too much longer beyond that. This is definitely a long-term investment for the city to make sure that, you know, our, our, our staff can mow the grounds up efficiently. But is it a, is it a short-term need? We could probably get by for a couple of months until we super that, but definitely want to do something this, this summer to get that, you know, work.
Mr. President, it sounds like something here would be a good one to, to just kind of make a motion to postpone indefinitely, and then we can bring it up when it, after this whole thing is without, um, really having to do a whole lot more than just make the motion to bring it back to, uh, table.
I think we already have a motion, though.
Mr. President, if I could also add to that, um, John, are, are these funds all transferable? Can we take it from the equipment fund, put it in the general operating?
The, yeah, to, right now, that, that money would come from the equipment fund anyways, and then at the end of the year, we'd be transferring back those purchases to cover, to cover our costs. And we have adequate funds in the equipment fund to, to handle this expense. I mean, when, when we're talking about the items coming up next, like, um, the water towers, I mean, that's something that we'd have to, to bond for, but, um, you know, a small purchase, you know, it's a forty thousand dollar mower. It's not small to some people, but it is relatively small in, in terms of our, our operations and equipment that we have. So that, we certainly have the, the capital to, to handle a purchase like that right away. You know, in, in the long term, obviously, you know, we have concerns about what our revenues are going to look like. You know, we have some positive feedback or positive outlook with the county at least doing the first, that they will be doing the first property tax collection on its current due date, and then remitting those funds back to the, the local jurisdictions. I suspect that those payments won't be as completely as we normally expect them to be, but they will be something, and we would, we do have indication that the state LGA payments are going to come in as in full on, you know, as, as they were, would normally have. The governor said that, and the legislature said that. Uh, so, so that's helpful. Our, we have a lot of flexibility. We build in a lot of flexibility in our budget with the year-end transfers that we have, and, and trying to maintain, uh, you know, maintaining a surplus in our general fund operating, and then man, managing that with additional transfers that we make at the end of the year. And if you recall, we did put in, um, we do put in quite a bit towards our street maintenance work. So if there is an area that we have some flexibility, it's, it's going to be in that. You know, we, we reserve those funds at the end of the budget year so that we have them available to do work in the following year. So that's going to be dependent upon, you know, the maintenance work that we do, and, and those are some of the things that we're going to try to, you know, we're certainly going to hold off on. You know, our irregular projects that we have identified and moving forward with, I think they're, they're very important that we, we do execute those, and it's going to be bonded projects anyways. We have the cash on hand to, to handle those. So that's, that would be something we look at, um, at the end, you know, as revenues, and we get more clo, we get closer to finding out where it is that we actually stand with our, with our budget for the total year. So I, I don't, if, if we can wait on purchasing it, I, I think that's, you know, that, that certainly take the value and the input from the, from those parks department of, of how they can manage it. But as we talk about potentially other equipment, if we do, if and when we do bring this, those items up, you know, some of those things just can't wait any longer, especially like the next item with the, with the water tower, but that isn't going to be as dramatically impacted by general fund dollars anyways because it's coming out of the utility funds in water, from the water department.
Mr. President, if we do postpone this, do we have to go out and do bids for it? Or will the, the bid price that we've got right now still remain true?
So the, the big bid price was.
So the, the state bid price will, will be true, it's up, and expiration date on it, I don't know, but it does last quite a while. Um, the individual one from Midwest Machines, we'd have to confirm with them to see if they were either that bid later on, uh, in the year. Um, but I think the one from Midwest Machines would have an expiration on it as well, so the state bid doesn't go further along.
According to this, right in front of me, this bid is already expired.
April sixth.
We did speak with them, and they were comfortable with, uh, with that price, uh, before the packet went out. Um, I mean, it's still valid, but I, I, we didn't ask if it was valid, you know, two months from now.
Okay. And, and John, I'd like, what you had to say on some of that other stuff, just a, a suggestion or a request? If we're identifying stuff that maybe we're gonna postpone or, uh, modify, thinking out loud here, maybe it's not a bad idea to still have it on the agenda so it's i- identified and pointed out as something that we're doing different in light of the current situation?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and we're, we've been holding off on, on a number of other capital items. We've had conversations about that as department heads of, you know, what can wait and what might need some lead. You know, certainly, other capital stuff needs lead time. You know, we've ordered vehicles back in January, you know, aren't, aren't here yet. So, there's, you know, not everything is, um, you know, gets executed.
I, I, I'm glad, from my point of view, I'm ha- I'm happy to hear that, so I just, I think it'd be a good idea to identify it. And I guess for the current, uh, topic of discussion, you know, if the city engineer says we need a mower, then I guess we need a mower. I just took this opportunity to bring up the subject in general.
Uh, roll call, vote please.
Hercock?
Yes.
Storyly?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Canacala?
Yes.
Wilchigrin?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Carries?
Water tower improvements, Viking Industrial Painting Omaha, Nebraska, awarded and approved. Greg? Can't hear you very well.
Yeah. We opened up bids for our, uh, West Tower coating project that, uh, all by time. The, 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 in, from Viking Industrial, uh, we are recommending to award the project based on the base plan. Alternate A, and alternate B. Alternate A is the interior. Alternate B is to extend the warranty from three years to five years. And the base bid was the exterior, plenty of days, with power. Price was nine hundred, nine, three thousand, five hundred dollars.
What is the wish of the council?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, water tower rehabilitation.
I'll second that.
Motion by council member Hanson, second by council member Gosick. Discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, do we have to get our ci- city engineer some updated equipment or something?
So he can hear us?
Sounds like he's talking into a soup can.
Maybe he is.
Do you, any questions about the water tower? Uh, we'll take a roll call vote, please.
Storyly?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Canacala?
Yes.
Wilchigrin? Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Um, Wayne, can I confirm your vote was a yes?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carried.
Old Business, Resolution two thousand twenty dash thirty, Department of Transportation and non-Department of Transportation Drug and Alcohol Testing Policies Adopt. Michaela?
Alright, thank you, Mr. President. Um, back in early April, we discussed, and I presented some draft DOT and non-DOT policies at the work session. And today, I'm asking the council to adopt the final policy. So just to recap a little bit, um, the Federal Motor Carrier Safety Administration, uh, back in January of two thousand twenty, um, they set out some new rules for employers regarding drug and alcohol testing requirements, specifically for candidates and current employees who are required to hold a commercial driver's license or C D L for their job. And the purpose of the F M C S A is to improve the overall safety on the roadways by preventing these commercial vehicles, um, and preventing them from related injuries and fatalities. So they went ahead and developed an online clearinghouse that will help meet this goal by providing real-time access to, um, different violations, making it much harder and much more difficult for drivers to conceal those violations, and then also making it easier for employers to meet obligations which include compliance. So the clearinghouse is an online secure database that contains records of these violations. Um, it also includes different return-to-duty and follow-up testing plan completion. And so applicants who need a C D L for their job here at the city, as well as current employees who hold a C D L for their job, will be required to register and, um, get signed up on the clearinghouse. So the city's required to do an annual check on them, it's called a query. Uh, one time a year, new employees that are required to hold a C D L for their job will be checked as a part of, or as a condition of their employment now. And all employees, union, and business agents were given, um, two weeks after the work session to review and send back any feedback or comments or questions that they had on those draft policies. And I did not receive any concerns or any, um, feedback on that. So again, I'm asking the council to adopt these new policies, and if approved, they'll go into effect in thirty days, so effective June fourth. And during this thirty-day window, the city is gonna distribute these new policies to all employees and obtain their acknowledgement and consent from employees, as well as provide training to those C D L drivers that are required to get on the clearinghouse and register.
What is the wish of the council?
I move to adopt.
I'll second that.
Motion by council member Lundberg, second by Mayor Zilka. Need discussion? Roll call, please.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Canacala?
Yes.
Wilchigrin? Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Storyly?
Yes.
Carries?
New Business, Interview Committee Recommendation, Brian Lindquist, Head Groundskeeper Golf Course, accept and approve. John?
Uh, thank you, Council President. We, uh, conducted an interview with Brian Lindquist for the head groundskeeper position. Um, as you're aware, Dale Branchad retired from the golf course as the assistant superintendent out there, or, uh, last, at the end of this, uh, last year. And Rich is, um, being the golf course manager is the overall responsible party for both the internal and outs- external operations. Um, however, in discussion about that structure and, and trying to utilize the skills that we have, um, with the staff that are out there, it was determined that Rich could, um, move into more of a role on the exterior side. However, he still needs, um, someone that would have some authority to be, to supervise the, supervise the other groundskeeper, and to handle that, um, to manage the, the, those staff. 'Cause there are, uh, a number of them that, that do that work out there. And for Rich to handle that direct overs- uh, operations and overseeing all of that staff, as well as having some level of, uh, work on the interior, um, we thought that that would be, um, quite that, an extreme ask for him. But, s- he still has, um, all the authority to make sure he's doing all the chemical applications, he's doing all the things that need a certification to, um, to conduct. But, would have then this person, uh, this role to be that, that next supervisor over tho- those staff to kinda execute his directives, um, for, for the, uh, U S A F G golf course. Uh, Brian started with, uh, as a grounds, uh, keeper out there a few years ago, and has been, um, very dedicated to the, to the work that he's done. Um, having, um, a previous career in law enforcement, he, um, is, was still, uh, left that profession, um, and then was looking for, for something to do. Um, and fortunate for, for us, he's, lives pretty close and was able to, willing and able to step up to that role, and has did, I, I think, an excellent job in the interview process, and will serve us really well in the, uh, head groundskeeper role, um, out there to, to manage that additional staff. 'Cause he has worked alongside them and, and with them, um, for a number of years, and, and really knows how to, what the, the day-to-day things that need to get done that aren't, um, expertise in, in, you know, handling the different diseases or in- insects and, and other stuff that you need a more specialized, um, you know, specialist like Rich to, to handle.
What is the wish of the council?
Council President, I move to accept the recommendation of the interview committee and give Brian Lind- Lindquist the job of head, head groundskeeper at the golf course.
Second.
Motion by council member Lundberg, second by council member Canacala. Need discussion?
Yeah, Mr. President.
Vote please. Go ahead.
Mr. President, John, now, is this gonna open up another position as a groundskeeper then? Uh, sounds like Brian's gonna be moving up. Are we gonna be looking to hire another groundskeeper here?
We still, I, we, I'm not certain if we still have positions to fill for groundskeepers out there, but we do, um, it, his moving to that isn't gonna take away from a lot of the day-to-day work that he is already doing. It's, it's just going to give him a supervisory role over the, the staff that, that works alongside him doing that work. He's still gonna be working, but, um, just, you know, having a supervisory capacity as well.
Okay, thank you. Call the roll, please.
Bushick?
Yes.
Canacala?
Yes.
Wilchigrin?
Yeah.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Storyly?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Carries?
Hey, Mr. President?
Yes.
Uh, really, really quick here, I think now would be a good time. I, I actually have, uh, a resident hitting me up on my phone right now asking what they have to do to get extra garbage bags. And I know this has come up before, so maybe it'd be a good time just to, while we're on the air, uh, to put out there, uh, what one needs to do to get an extra garbage bag.
Roll your, could you tell us?
Yes, Council President, so, um, our vestibule on the east side is open during the days, so if a resident needs garbage bags, we, they're four dollars apiece. We ask that they either write out a check or come with exact change. Um, call us when they get into the entryway, and we will get them a bag, or two, or whatever they need.
Okay, thank you.
Fire Department, Grant Application, Department of Natural Resources, Volunteer Fire Assistance, Turnout Equipment, move and authorize. Chief, are you there?
Yeah, thank you, Council President. Uh, I'm requesting to apply for the Minnesota D N R Volunteer Fire Assistant Grant Program, the annual program that they have. It's a fifty-fifty match, uh, the max award that we can ask for is five thousand dollars, so they would award twenty-five hundred. Can be used for various types of equipment. In this case, I would propose to purchase gear for the new firefighters once they complete probation, it would be used towards that. So I would, uh, request approval to apply for that grant program.
What is the wish of the council?
Mr. President, I'd make a motion to approve and authorize the grant application.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Zilka, second by council member Storyly. Need discussion? Roll call, please.
Canacala?
Yes.
Wilchigrin?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Storyly?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Carries?
Intent to purchase two thousand five Freightliner M-two rescue truck, approve and authorize. Chief?
This is an unplanned purchase that came up about six weeks ago. The state fire marshal sent out a notice that they have, there's regional hazmat teams throughout the state, eleven of them, and they are replacing four of the trucks. Uh, they're basically in like-new condition. We had a discussion on John and Greg and Brad and I, and talked about looking at these and possibly moving forward. So the truck committee went at the one in St. Cloud. Uh, that one is not for sale, but it's identical to the ones that aren't for sale. Truck committee feels like it would meet our needs and would be a huge cost savings over what we would have to spend in the next couple of years to replace the rescue truck, which is budgeted for at that time. They're asking seventy thousand dollars, and they came up with that amount based on what a fair truck reseller offered them. So we feel very good opportunity, um, and we meet our needs probably for the next fifteen years and could possibly when we remount it on, at, row. It's a very well-built truck and has a lot of features on it that we normally wouldn't, uh, be able to over-specify, so. Any questions on that? Um, it would be funded out of the fired equipment.
Just for everybody else, else to hear, before when we talked, you mentioned what you thought that the truck reseller would be trying to sell these for?
Yeah, um.
Do you remember what that was?
Yep, approximately double the cost, so probably a hundred and fifty thousand. Um, just kind of a comparison, uh, trucks that are, are being sold now similar to this are gonna be upwards of three hundred thousand, at least. And with the features it has on it, it would probably be higher than that.
What is the wish of the council?
I move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Gosick, and I think second by Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Discussion?
Yeah, Mr. President. Uh, Chief Craig, uh, is this vehicle gonna be used as a hazmat as it is right now? Or is there gonna be a lot of conversion going on after this is purchased?
Basically similar to a heavy rescue truck, so we're, now it's calls hazmat equipment for those state teams, but for our purposes, it's just basically shelving and compartment space. So we'll just use it, mainly gonna be used for our rescue equipment, which right now is spread across three trucks. We'll be able to consolidate that into, uh, one vehicle, get rid of that old amp ones that's noted in the request, the nineteen ninety-one model.
Thank you. The other point?
Can you put some pictures up on the screen of it? I, there were several in the packet, but I'm not seeing them on the screen. There, look at that, what a beauty.
Gonna have to repaint it, though, I think.
We can, we can look at options, they can do stickers on them too. It's not cause or effect, if I can tell you that right now, we're gonna just roll with it, white. Yep.
Give the more head on there, too.
The other discussion? Call, call a roll, please.
Wilchigrin?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Storyly?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Canacala?
Yes.
Carries?
And just one other thing I can point out with that, who is this agreement is non-binding, they said. So if something comes up in the next few months, we have to back, come with it again. They just want to know that they have intended to hire that discipline.
Thank you for checking into that. Position descriptions, Fire Chief and Michaela, for the paid on-call assistant Fire Chief?
Yeah, uh, thank you, Council President. Um, basically, before, there was no job descriptions for the captain and assistant chief positions. So, right now, we have an open captain position, which I held before I got promoted to chief, and we were looking to fill those. Um, in the past also, those, those positions were just appointed by the chief, and I wanna make it more of a formalized process to mirror, things are done throughout the. So, the first step was to create job positions, and I worked with Michaela on that. Those job descriptions are attached, so I believe this, the first thing here is to approve those job descriptions, and then there's a couple other requests with this as well. I don't know if you want me to talk about all of it at once, or is it just like?
Well, I think we could at least do the two position descriptions together. We have them separate lines, but you can, if there's anything that we need to know about them, you could tell us?
Uh, I don't think there's anything specific, I mean, they, they kind of mirror each other. It's just, uh, the assistant chief has a little more responsibility than the captain. Primary role of, of these is to, you know, help take command at fire scenes and oversee the firefighters. They do not have any actual supervisory ability because they're not full-time employees. So that's spelled out at the top that they don't technically supervise anyone. It's more to make those command decisions at scenes and help facilitate trainings and things like that. The, uh, organizational charts, as we currently are, we have three captains and with NIMS, uh, that places ten to, firefighters underneath each captain, if they're overseeing them at a scene. I would propose that we move to five captains, which will put us in that five to seven firefighters per captain that more closely aligns with what NIMS or ICS recommends. There's really no added cost, it's fifty cents in our, um, for, for captain versus a firefighter. The other thing I, I plan to do with that, if we go to that new organizational chart, is to create squads with the captains, where the apples, the captain and the squads assigned to like monthly truck checks. And use it for various things like that.
So we are on item three A, paid on-call assistant fire chief. What is the wish of the council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Zilka, second by Councilmember Canafla. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Storey?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Canafala?
Yes.
Wilchigrin?
Yes.
Carries?
On-call fire captain, approve. What is the wish of the council?
I move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Lundberg, second by Councilmember Wilchigrin? Any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. President, we're just voting on the description for these positions at the time, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Roll call, please.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Storey?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Canafala?
Yes.
Wilchigrin?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Carries?
Post in paid on-call fire captains, authorize. This is where you talked about?
Yes.
Never mind, let's not tell the next one that we go to five.
Yeah, well, those maybe need to be reversed or talk about them together. Cause it basically, that new chart needs to be adopted before you can authorize how many captains we would hire. So if you adopt that, I would propose that we post for three captain positions.
Someone would make the motion, that way we can probably do them both together at the same time. Go ahead, Raquel.
I would like to make a motion to approve the, the new proposed organi- organizational chart and to, um, post for three new captains.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Lundberg, second by Mayor Zilka. Any discussion?
I just have a really quick question, Mr. President, for the chief. Um, I'm looking at your organizational chart. The only question I have is, uh, you have the positions? And who are, currently, obviously, you're the chief. Who, who, who are current assistant chiefs and captains we have on staff now?
Right now, the assistant chiefs are Tim Tabit and Mike Lemire. And then the captains are Glenn Goble and Jim Bens. And the plan would be to leave those currently in place and then just hire the three captains to.
Okay. Add it. I, I will, I will add initially, when I saw the proposal, my, my gut reaction was, oh, here we go, looking to expand things, is this necessary? And my head, and I want to tell you that I, I talked to somebody that I'm not going to identify because I, they're in the know on how some stuff works. And I just want to let you know that the answer that I got was, if your new fire chief is requesting this, there's probably a reason and a need, so. Take that as a compliment.
Thank you.
Mr. President, Chief, I have a question, uh, what's the process to, uh, to move, to, to bring on these three new captains? You're going to post it with them, the Little Falls firefighter, uh, volunteer system right now, correct?
Yep, it'll come from the internal pool, but like I said, we want to go more with, more closely aligned with the city's hiring practices. So I'll work with Michaela on that, and we'll do an internal application and then some form of, uh, uh, interview most quickly. So we'll come up with something like that, and then it'll come back to you guys for final approval.
Roll call, vote, please.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Storey?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Canafala?
Yes.
Wilchigrin?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Carries?
Resolution two thousand twenty dash thirty-one, approved plans and specifications and call for bids, public improvement three D-three, adopt. Greg?
The, uh, item in front of you tonight is the approved plans and specs for Southwest avenues. Uh, we are looking at opening bids roughly a month from now. Uh, so we would like the council to approve resolution two thousand twenty dash thirty-one so that we can get prices for the project.
Move to approve resolution two thousand twenty dash thirty-one?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Storey, second by Councilmember Canafla. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Storey?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Canafala?
Yes.
Wilchigrin?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Carries?
Resolution two thousand twenty dash thirty-two, approved plans and specifications and call for bids, Sunrise Edition Three, adopt. Greg?
This one is for Sunrise Three. We are looking at obtaining pricing for the development just north of town, uh, up by Sunrise Edition. Um, we're asking the council to approve this so that we can obtain pricing and bring that forth to the council for approval.
What is the wish of the council? Move to approve resolution two thousand twenty dash thirty-two?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Storey, second by Councilmember Wilchigrin? Discussion? Greg, if I remember correctly, most of this gets assessed back to the builders, correct?
That is correct, yes. There's a small portion of the street reconstruction on Admin Street, that would be the city cost. The remainder would be the developer's cost. And those costs will be split out once we see the bids, uh, for the council to see at the future time.
Resolution, call and roll, please.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Canafala?
Yes.
Wilchigrin?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Storey?
Yes.
Carries?
Mr. President, I have a really quick question backing up a little bit, doesn't affect the vote. And, and that is for the city engineer, I was just looking at the plans. Greg, who picks the names of the streets when we're adding stuff?
Well, the developer works with, uh, their surveyor to do the streets. And then it goes to the council for final approval for the flats. And that will be coming through the planning commission, and ultimately the council, uh, probably coming up here in May or June. So those will be coming before you want to get.
That was, didn't answer the question. The question was, who picks the names of the streets?
If the developer originally proposes them, the council would ultimately adopt those.
Okay.
Okay. I, I think, uh, when we have a new street going in, I, I would like to see us take that opportunity, maybe to recognize some people, you know, founding members of the city, stuff like that. I have some in mind that I can share on a, at a different date.
Okay.
Any city council reports and city authorities, boards, bureaus, commissions or committees? We have none, we have announcements, I'm going to first ask the mayor to let us know about the, the flyover.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'm going to read this email that I received only because it contains a lot of pertinent information. Uh, Wednesday, May sixth, Minnesota National Guard will be conducting statewide flyovers in recognition of those on the front lines of COVID-nineteen pandemic response. Part of the nationwide Air Force Initiative, Minnesota National Guard, will fly over communities throughout the states at Major General John Jensen, the edge-in general of Minnesota National Guard. These flyovers are our way of showing solidarity for those who have stepped forward to serve during this pandemic. This is a small way that we can salute those at the forefront of COVID-nineteen response for their service and sacrifice. These flights scheduled for Wednesday are part of the nationwide effort to recognize health worker, healthcare workers, emergency responders, food industry and other essential workers throughout the state that have done their part to keep the state function, functioning during the stay-at-home order. Aircraft flying these missions will be combinations of F-sixteen fighter Falcon aircraft from the one hundred and forty-eighth Fighter Wing out of Duluth and C-one-thirty Hercules aircraft from the one thirty-third Air Wing out of Fort Snelling in St. Paul. Our crews must fly regularly to maintain their proficiency, said Colonel James Pleat, one hundred and thirty-third Air Wing Commander. This is an outstanding way to both train our air crew and to recognize those in our community that are on the front line working hard for the citizens of Minnesota. Flight path for Wednesday will reach following communities, Raynard, Coon Rapids, Fridley, Little Falls, Minneapolis, Monticello, Hastings, Robinsdale, Rochester, St. Cloud, St. Louis Park, St. Paul, Stillwater, White Bear Lake and Woodbury. Flyovers are set to fly near local medical facilities in each community. Other sites in the state will be flown over during the future flyovers planned for later in the month. Our crew live and work in these cities, the Minnesota National Guard has units and facilities in fifty-eight communities throughout the state. They have always supported us, this is a small way we can show that we support them too, said Colonel Christopher Blomquist, one hundred and forty-eighth Fighter Wing Commander. Thank you for your service. These flyovers are incorporated into previously scheduled training missions. There is potential for the times to flex based on the training missions, weather and/or airspace availability. Variance of a few minutes either side of the scheduled time may be unavoidable. There is weather delay or cancellation, an update to the advisor will be provided. All times are subject, subject to change, a flying over will also be visible to areas surrounding the flight path. We recommend rooftops and open areas adjacent to buildings for the best view.
Thank you. And we have an announcement, the, so planning commission, public hearing via Zoom video conferencing regarding the Americans with Disabilities Act Transition Plan, May eleventh, two thousand twenty. Any other announcements?
Brad, I would just add for the previous, I don't know if I said that, uh, the Little Falls time would be eleven to eleven fifteen. And the plan is to fly from the northeast to the southwest. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other announcements? None, we will adjourn our meeting at eight twenty-one. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye all.